I now call to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpin Springs on Tuesday, January 14, 2020 at 6:30 PM. And roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuza's.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terapany.
Here.
Commissioner Seber is not here yet. Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Kurt Snare from the St. Timothy Lutheran Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Heavenly and gracious Creator God, God of love and of life, we give you thanks for the gift of another day and we give you thanks for this beautiful city that you've allowed us to live in. Help us to be good stewards of all that you've given us. We pray for your wisdom upon our leaders that they might guide us in ways that bring you glory. We also pray for all of the citizens who reside here that he might help us to be peaceful and that we would prosper. We ask all of this in the name of the Most High God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Commission meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight. This evening, we have a special presentation for Mr. Keith Thunberg. Mr. Keith Thunberg, as a teacher and as a coach, you have inspired and helped your students of Tarpin Springs High School, not only in the classroom but also on the basketball court as well. And you helped them to become good citizens for our community. Today, the City of Tarpin Springs wants to express our appreciation and to say thank you for your contributions. And the plaque says, "With our greatest appreciation presented Keith Thunberg, teacher and a coach, in appreciation for your teaching, coaching, inspiration, and encouragement. Your dedicated service, willing spirit have been inspiration to all of us." Mayor Chris Alahuza's, Vice Mayor Townsend Terapany, Commissioners ReSeber, Commissioner Jacob Carr, and Commissioner Connor Donovan. We all want to say thank you. Coach, would you come forward to accept this? Thank you for your contributions to our kids.
Thank you.
If you want to say a few words.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you to the Commissioners and City of Tarpin Springs. Carol and I moved here in seventy-six and I taught two years in Land O' Lakes before I came to Tarpin High, playing a putting twenty-eight, twenty-six years, twenty-eight years at Tarpin High. And, uh, but all this kind of came about, I think, because I was also put into the Hall of Fame at Ball State, which is where I graduated and played volleyball there. And, uh, I was under a coach, Don Shondell, Dr. Don Shondell, who was probably one of the leading volleyball coaches and, uh, in the nation. And, uh, I'd look, I was basically started volleyball when I was too short to play basketball in college. So, uh, he brought me out from a ten-foot basket to an eight-foot net and it was pretty easy. So, uh, I played freshman year and then my sophomore, junior, and senior year, I became all-conference and, honorable mention, All-American my senior year. And he started the Hall of Fame in like three years ago and the whole conference, MIVA, called the MIVA, Midwestern Intercollegiate Volleyball Association, which includes Ohio State, which is biggest university, and, uh, most of it's a little bit smaller than Ohio State. But Shondell taught me a lot of things about, you know, how to act with coaches or with, and players and how to teach. And, uh, even though it's a different sports, it still applies. And I just appreciate all the people in Tarpin Springs and I've either had probably, some of you are your kids or your grandkids. So, thank you very much. I'm quite honored. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Keith and Carol, it's an honor to know both of you. Growing up, going to Methodist Church and going to Tarpin Springs High School, I got to know the Thornbergs. And Keith touched on a couple of accolades that he, he earned as a, he was a volleyball player. Honorable All-American his senior year with the Ball State Cardinals. Uh, let's see. Led the Ball State Cardinals to four MIVA regular season and tournament titles during his playing years of sixty-four through sixty-seven. And then, um, first-team selection in each of his final three years as well. So, uh, it's awesome that you, you chose to call Tarpin Springs your home for so many years. It's been great to know you both and it's, uh, like I mentioned, it's an honor to have you a part of our high school for many, many years and then a part of our community. So, thank you for all of it, Ann.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Thank you, Coach. We are now going to the public comments of the items that will not be discussed tonight. If anyone has any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record. You'll be given four minutes.
Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone and all residents of Tarpin Springs. I want to thank the police and the city for all the work that they did for Epiphany. It was outstanding. It was beautiful. It's one of the finest epiphanies we've had in many, many years. They did, you've done an outstanding job with controlling the city, the traffic as best as you could, and I just don't think there's enough congratulations to you for what you accomplished for that wonderful day. And I want to thank the candidates, especially Commissioner Carr, for not putting up all the signs around the bayou till after Epiphany. That's why I've been asking for rules and regulations for, uh, candidates' elections. And he certainly set the tone with putting up signs. And I congratulate you, Commissioner Carr. The next thing is the parking in the city on Epiphany. It was wild. Anywhere from twenty-five to ten dollars, people were charging to park in yards, in lots, uh, all over town. I don't know how we can regulate that, that they should get a permit to do the, excuse me, to do this. My incidents was, I couldn't understand why there was no parking in front of the library when I went uptown at eleven fifteen, but on the side. And the police chief knows this story. I pulled in, this man came and says, "I want twenty dollars for you to park here." I said, "This is city property. You can't charge twenty dollars." They gave me a permit. I said, "No, they didn't." And he says, "Well, who do you think you are?" I said, "You see that name on that plaque? That's me." He says, "Prove it." I showed him. I says, "Now, give those two people that pulled in next to me that you took the twenty dollars from, or I'm going to the police." He got quite a bit of money on the side of the library. That can't be allowed. And we should say, "Do not charge for parking." You're not be, going to be able to stop it in all the areas of Tarpin, but they make a lot of money off of cars. There was a lady on Orange Street with orange cones for parking Orange and Gross in the lots next to her. Or you couldn't even get up the street. She explained that last night at the historic preservation meeting. I had an incident when I went home. The opposing party on the Stammas Zoots development put signs on the church yard, the Catholic yard, all of them down the trail, on the library, and all over town. That was wrong on such a, uh, special day. Because Epiphany is not only celebrated by the Greek Orthodox, it's celebrated by all religions. And I thought that was very cheesy for them to do it. And I get, I don't think they realized, "They put one in my yard." Well, they put it in the wrong yard. And I meant to bring it tonight, and I'm sure they did it so Stammas and Zoots can see it as they went home. I don't appreciate people like that. That's a slap in our community's face. You don't use a religious holiday to go after people. Now, I want to ask you about South Spring Boulevard, when you put up, put, lay the sidewalk. Uh, I understand the city may cut the tree down, and if they are, I'm going to ask you, is that on the agenda tonight? It is on the, well, I'll wait because I looked into something and I want the city to do something about it because it's historic. All right, let's see if that's all I have here. If not, I'll think about it and come back up and tell you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Coach. Devade Kodes, 538 West Cedar Street. Mayor Commissioners, I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season and I wish you all a prosperous new year. I'd like to raise again the matter of Court Street, its re-bricking and using shade trees instead of palm trees. I sent you two memoranda and I discussed the matter with the city manager. The same manager assured me that you did not discuss re-bricking the street with him. Uh, you did discuss palm trees but not re-bricking. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I can't discuss the matter with you individually because of the sunshine law, so I'm here now. It's difficult for me to understand, and many residents who I've spoken to feel the same way, why the reconstruction of Court Street will not be in brick instead of asphalt, especially since the entire roadbed, including utilities, will be replaced. I understand that the word "cost" was used when the mayor mentioned brick. However, I can provide you with all sorts of technical papers that demonstrate that lifecycle costs for a street are less with brick than with asphalt. In fact, one piece of data shows that an asphalt street will be resurfaced sixteen times over the lifespan of a brick street. There are numerous reports on the environmental advantages of brick over asphalt, not to mention that it's the national trend to go back to brick streets in historic communities. Just before the holidays, the city held a public workshop on the Activate Tarpin Springs project. As you know, the project involves the corner of Tarpin Avenue and Spring Boulevard. It's also at the west end of Court Street. About fifty residents attended the meeting, even though the workshop was not well advertised. The vast majority expressed the desire to remain with a more historic, less urban theme for the area. More recently, this commission used the word "historic" when it chose to go with brick on the new entryway signs. More so, it added that "historic" was more in the character of Tarpin Springs. This decision was made despite the expected significant increase in the cost of the signs. I very much hope that we do not regress to using the word "historic" when it works to our advantage as a convenient for justifying selected projects rather than it being a truly a standard for all city projects in the historic district. Likewise, concerning the matter of palm trees, just before the holidays, I attended the Sustainability Committing Meeting. Uh, the committee is off to a great start and we should all be looking forward to the wonderful things, uh, their effort will produce for our town. In that meeting, some data was provided about how the average daily temperature will rise over the next several decades, reducing the number of residents wanting to, uh, to take walks. That's not a good thing. Please remember shade trees are countermeasure to that effect. If planted today, we should have shade from those trees in about twenty years. So, it's important to do something today. In the nineteen nineties, the city had a green canopy program. It's greatly, uh, it greatly enhanced the shade of Craig Park and other areas of the city. I believe you mentioned re-establishing this program. I hope to see that happen. With regard to Court Street, I'm not suggesting that it all be planted with canopy trees. However, I believe there should be a significant number of trees that are. Uh, also, it was mentioned that canopy trees caused root damage to pavement. And that was one reason why palm trees were recommended. I've checked on this and I've learned that not the entire city staff was consulted before that statement was made. Also, there are mitigating measures that can be taken to prevent this type of root damage. In fact, I can provide you technical papers there as well that show that the use of canopy trees are preferred with asphalt streets because the shade preserves and shields the pavement from destructive heat and adverse effects of the direct sunlight. But more simply, let me ask you, how many times have you been on a walk by yourself or with your family and crossed the street because the other side offered more shade? How many times have you looked for other outdoor tables at restaurants and elsewhere that had shade? Why wouldn't you reflect on those situations when you consider the type of trees for Court Street? In summary.
Like yours, your time has expired.
I understand. I respectfully request that you re-agenda a discussion on Court Street before the design process goes too far. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Here none. Thank you. We are now going to, uh, proclamation. Item number one is the Greek History Month. And the proclamation reads, "The City of Tarpin Springs, Florida proclamation would ask, in eighteen eighties, John Chaney introduced the first local sponge business to Tarpin Springs, utilized many blocks and whites from Key West and Bahamas, and a few Greek immigrants using the method of hook sponging. And whereas in nineteen oh five, John Kokoris introduced the technique of sponge diving of Tarpin Springs with divers from the islands of Agin Ainidra of the Saroni Gulf. Later, he brought five hundred deep-sea diver crews from the Dodecanese Islands of Kalimnos Halki and Simi, revoling in the local sponge industry and causing Tarpin Springs to be known as the sponge capital of the world. And whereas Greeks introduced the Epiphany Service with men diving for the cross at the spring bayou, which commemorates the baptism of Christ, it trucks people from America and the world on January sixth exterior and is the largest Epiphany event in America. And whereas, the Greek community started restaurants, groceries, coffee shops, and taverns to sell the products needed by Greek people and which have become an important element in Tarpin Springs commerce. And whereas, the population of Tarpin Springs has the largest percentage of Greek Americans in the United States. And now therefore, I Chris Alahuza's, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of January two thousand and twenty be recognized in support Tarpon Springs Week History Month. With us today is the Counsel General of Greece, Mr. Spados, and also, uh, Afy Vasiliou and Bill Theos from, uh, the Hellenic Culture Center. Uh, the Counsel General of Greece, if you, and representatives of Prometheus, please come forward. And accept this. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words at the podium?
On behalf of the Hellenic Culture Center Prometheus, I would like to thank you for this proclamation. And we are highly appreciative to the City of Tarpin Springs for honoring Greek language here in Tarpin Springs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Dear Mayor Alahuza's, dear City Council, members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to thank the mayor for the great honor he does to Tarpin Springs citizens of Greek origin and by extension to Greece by proclaiming the month of January as the Tarpin Springs Greek History Month. Tarpin Springs must be a rather unusual case in American history. A small city that suddenly rose to prominence in a matter of a few years after the influx of a wave of immigrants from the old continent who brought with them the way of life and the technical know-how and applied it to the new world. It is an undeniable witness and proof to the fact that America has truly been a land of opportunity and that those who work hard succeeded and added their diversity to this huge country. And what I find amazing is that these Greek immigrants and their descendants became exemplary U.S. citizens while managing at the same time to maintain their traditions as if no time had passed since then. In fact, Tarpin Springs even today retains a uniquely Greek atmosphere which makes it stand out from all the other cities in the Tampa Bay area. This particularity of Tarpin Springs was honored a few days ago with a visit of the Greek Prime Minister. Thank you, Mayor Alahuza's, for remembering these people, recognizing their contributions to the progress of their new country, and making us Greeks from Greece proud. Thank you.
I also feel very, uh, very honored to recognize the Greek-American community of Tarpin Springs for their contributions to Tarpin Springs. Thank you. Any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item?
I'm gonna say something.
You sure?
Uh, I guess being Greek, uh, growing up overseas, I appreciate our Greek culture here and, uh, I appreciate the, uh, the minister coming and, um, and all of Epiphany too, like Anita said. And thank you to our police department and everyone that was involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Item number two on the agenda is another proclamation. Vice Mayor Terapany will read the proclamation on the Martin Luther King Junior Day.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Tarpin Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas January twenty, two thousand and twenty marks the observance of the Dr. Martin Luther King Federal Holiday, and whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas celebrating Dr. King's life and spirit through community-wide recognitions and service on the holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, bringing our citizens together and strengthening our communities and nation. And whereas, whereas it is appropriate for the City of Tarpin Springs to support a community celebration and observance of the holiday honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all of our citizens. And whereas the City of Tarpin Springs urges all people to join and pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and apply, and apply his life and teachings of service to inspire others to serve and remember his spirit of community. Now therefore, I, Vice Mayor Townsend Terapany, by the virtue and authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim Doc, uh, January twenty, twenty twenty as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, accepting as Carmen Lake. Is Carmen Lake here?
Carmen.
Yeah. All right. Reverend, you want to say a few words? You're welcome. Thank you.
It's Mayor Commissioners. Truly, we thank you for your support over the years. This year will mark the twenty-fifth anniversary that the City of Tarpin Springs have partnered with the Dr. Martin Luther King Committee to, uh, observe and celebrate, uh, this holiday. As you know, uh, the events that we have here in Tarpin are here on the Saturday before the event. So, this Saturday, January eighteenth, we will have our celebration here in Tarpin Springs. Uh, that celebration will start at eight AM in the morning with a breakfast at the First United Methodist Church. We invite everyone to come out. There's no charge for the breakfast. The Tarpin Springs High School Jacobson, uh, uh, Culinary Academy, uh, will be providing the breakfast. There will be a program. We will have a, uh, a guest speaker, Mr. Leon Jackson, a retired police officer with the city of, of St. Petersburg, who was part of what is called the Courageous Twelve, who fought for equal rights in law enforcement in the city of St. Petersburg. So, we, uh, will have him there. We'll honor to have him there. Also, there will be, uh, other things going, other entertainment at the breakfast as well. After the breakfast, we'll go right across the street and line up for the parade, which will start at eleven o'clock. Uh, the parade will kick off at that time. Uh, we have several bands coming, including, uh, band out of St. Petersburg. And we ask everyone to come out and enjoy the parade. The parade will end at Dorset Park where we have a celebration in the park where we have barbecue and other good food there that you can have. And we'll have entertainment at the park as well until around two or three PM. So, we thank you, uh, City Commissioners, thank you to the residents, and thank you to part of the committee that's here that, that helped put this together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Smith. Uh, I'd like to thank the organizers for this celebration and I'm looking forward to the celebration, to the parade on the eighteenth. Any commission comments? Commissioner Seber.
Yes, uh, thank you, Reverend, and, uh, it's always a great parade and you always have so much scheduled. So, thank you to the committee, Carmen and Mr. Hadad, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Unfortunately, I won't be here and I hate to miss it because I'll be out of the country, but wish you a successful parade and a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Thank you. We are now going to the consent agenda. Item number three is the minutes. September fourth, September fourth, two thousand and nineteen, special session. September tenth, two thousand and nineteen, regular session. September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, special session. September twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, regular session. And September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, work session. Number four is the attorney fees. Traskadinal invoice number, uh, January fourth, two thousand and twenty. Number five, the special events. A is the First Friday, amended Friday, uh, February through November two thousand and twenty. B is the Sunset Beach Concert Series, February through November, uh, two thousand and twenty. C is the Sunset Hills PTA Color Run, February eighth, two thousand and twenty. D is Movies in the Park, February fifteenth through March twenty-first, April eighteen, and two thousand and twenty. Number six is the award file. Number two zero 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 forty-five, N.J.L. Utilizing Florida Sheriff's Association Contract, FSA nineteen, V.E.H. seventeen dot zero, heavy trucks and equipment for the purchase of bypass pump. Award file number two thousand zero five one, N.J.L. Bar screen and greet washer parts and service. Number eight is the Renew RFP sixteen zero zero thirty-two PCM insurance programs, life and long-term disability. And number nine is the Increase File Number two zero 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 thirty-four, N.J.L. Purchase of, uh, culinator, equipment, and service. Any item that you'd like to pull?
Just have a couple of comments, nothing to pull there.
Which one?
Um, the special events.
Okay.
Five A.
Five A.
Special events.
Five A for me as well.
Five A. Okay, um, and are there any, uh, public comments on these items? If not, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
For items three through nine, with the exception of five A.
I have a second. Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza's.
Yes. Special event A, First Friday.
Five A.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I just want to say thank you to the merchants and I saw Commissioner Donovan is at this meeting as well. Uh, coordinating with the city, the police department, the local merchants, and also the commission with, uh, having some more communication, um, with the business owners about the event itself. I'm encouraged to see the outcome of that and, uh, looking forward to support this great event for many, many more months. Um, and then I just want to make a quick comment on the other ones. Um, the other special events are Sunset Beach Concert Fri, uh, Series, the Sunset Hills PTA Color Run, which is a new event, and then Movies in the Park. These are just really great events to see that our city is doing as a whole. And I'm encouraged by this because there's a lot to do for younger families and there's a lot to do for all ages as well. So, uh, thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
Yes, I also appreciate all the events and I appreciate, of course, the Tarpin Springs Merchants Association that put on over twenty events. Uh, First Friday is a very popular event. I was not able to be here at that meeting because I was out of state on business, uh, but I was quite surprised when I got texts that Tuesday night about the outcome of the meeting. Uh, I was pretty bewildered. Um, First Fridays are not only an economic I was pretty bewildered. First Fridays are not only an economic driver for our businesses, they're an event that our city residents and people from outside of the area come to, and not only do the business owners count on First Fridays, but so do the employees, hundreds of employees that are employed by these businesses. So putting that event off until this month, you know, had some difficulties for the Merchants Association with permitting and getting things in order in time for the First Friday in February. So I just want to say that I was quite surprised by the outcome at the last meeting. I appreciate all that you do and I understand the time that's needed for organizing and getting everybody put in place besides parking and waiting to park, and it can't be done in an hour. So thank you for all you do.
Commission Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think if the outcome of the last meeting got us here, I'm really happy with where we're at, largely thanks to the Merchants Association. You guys were super flexible. Thank you again for being willing to meet and change what needs to be changed. Again, thank you to everybody that attended the meeting, and I wanted especially to thank our police department and Major Trail because a lot of these changes and a lot of these recommendations came from their personal knowledge and experience of handling these events. But thank you, everybody that came to that meeting, and I'm looking forward to a great First Friday year.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mary Lozus.
Yes, thank you. Next is the special consent agenda. Item number 10 is the authorization to advertise for construction bids for South Spring Boulevard sidewalk connector project. Staff report.
Ms. Robertson?
Thank you. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. Good evening. For this item, we're requesting the board's approval to move forward with advertising for construction bids for the installation of about 900 feet of new sidewalk on the east side of South Spring Boulevard. This project would close a gap, sidewalk gap, between Lime and Lemon Streets along South Spring, where there currently is no sidewalk. The design process included detailed survey work and several site visits with residents and homeowners to discuss the project and get feedback on the alignment of the sidewalk. We are fortunate that the right-of-way in this area is wide, giving us room to adjust and avoid trees and other infrastructure as much as we possibly could. Potentially, the project could have impacted 14 trees along this route. We were able to avoid 11 of them, and the three that will need to be removed are palm trees, a 10-inch, a 13, and a 14-inch. And in each of those cases, we consulted with the homeowners to discuss removal and what we would replace those trees with. So we have a plan for all of those. With the input from the homeowners and the residents, we created plan sheets that were mailed to each of them via certified mail, again seeking input on the placement of the sidewalk. Kind of doing an iterative process here. We got feedback and we did plans and we did feedback again. The mailout resulted in another field visit and some more phone calls, and based on that input, we're currently working to finish up the design and create a bid package. So with your approval tonight, we'll take any final input and tweets, tweaks, finish up the design, and put the project out to bid for construction. So with that, I will stop for questions.
Thank you. Any commission comments? Commission Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, I've got a question for you. The sidewalk makes a hard right on Lemon Street, and it looks like there's a small triangle island in the picture that doesn't have a sidewalk that fronts South Spring. Is it more of a safety reason to keep people off that area? Or, I mean, it looks like a seating area, so I'd imagine the sidewalk should continue across if you're walking. Can you elaborate a little bit?
Sure. We took a close look at that, and there is sidewalk that goes just back to the east and wraps around the back of that. I kind of see that as a small little park, and while there is ramps to get up to it, I didn't feel like interrupting that park with a sidewalk would maybe be the best fit. So instead, we just connected where it was not connected on West Lemon, back towards Bay Street. So we have it continuous around the backside of that.
Okay. To me, I think it would make sense to have both pieces that go all the way through. But I would, I think we could do that in-house if we need to.
True.
Look at it further.
That's true.
Any other commission comments? Commission Seber?
Yeah, on that note, I understand what you're saying, Bob, because there are streets coming in both ways, and you wouldn't want to have a safety issue there with sidewalks going across there. As you know, I live on that street, even though I'm not going to be, you know, in any way having a sidewalk in front of me. I did talk to some of my residents. I heard from one resident who said that, I guess the people who came out came during Christmas week, but she had not gotten a call or made an appointment with, and one of her oak trees is being taken down, so I had some concerns about that. Also, as you know, I thought the money should be spent on the other side of the streets with a survey or some kind of study with Corps of Engineers on what we can do to connect the whole bayou with a walkway or a bikeway. But I did have some concerns about some of these residents who didn't get phone calls and get appointments made with, and that one oak tree that's coming down.
Well, we are not taking down any oak trees. There's no oak trees coming down as part of this project. Ms. Lindsay did contact me regarding her oak tree. We've had the city arborist evaluate it, and we're leaving it up to her if she wants that one to come down. But at this point, we're not proposing to take any oak trees down. Just three palm trees.
But you can work around that one oak tree.
Definitely, yeah. All the oak trees are staying at this point, unless Ms. Lindsay in particular doesn't want, decides that she would like us to remove it. It's advantageous for our project to not have it there, but we can work around it too. So it's really up to the homeowner in that case.
Well, will that put the tree in danger with having asphalt and work going around it?
I think with a small sidewalk, we can do it in a way that won't endanger the tree. The tree is already, it's probably got maybe five years or so left. I don't know the, I mean, not our arborist, but our arborist did provide information. She did go out and look at it and say that it's got a limited lifespan. So she recommended having it removed, but again, left it up to leaving it to the homeowner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, I just want to thank you for all of your coordination and communication with the residents on this project and the back and forth. I know that on this particular item, sometimes we gave you a little bit of direction and then switched up the direction on you. So I know it's hard to move forward for a certain period of time, but I do appreciate you going above and beyond to communicate with everybody and making sure that, we know that this was a time, or not a time-sensitive project, but a sensitive project as it relates to the construction and loss of trees and, you know, going a little bit outside of the norm. But I do think that it will prove to be a productive connection from a safety standpoint and also from a pedestrian crossing and walking standpoint. So I appreciate all your hard work on it. Do we have any other option other than penny funding for the funding of the project?
I think that's a question for the city manager. I'm sure this is really our best.
No, we exhausted, we exhausted our sidewalk, so we don't have any sidewalk. Hopefully when, you know, our referendum passes, we'll have additional down the road, but right now, that's where we have to fund the project from.
Great. I just ask, I always try and keep the unencumbered funds as available as possible.
Hopefully in the future, we'll have availability of the extra sidewalk money that's going to provide, and we'll be able to use that, and that will save money from that fund in the future.
Thank you.
Commission Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just had a couple of quick questions, but again, thank you for all you and your staff's hard work on this.
Thank you.
Can I just get a little bit more detail on the input process from the homeowners? Because I know in our backup, you know, there was a mail, there was a mailing sent out, and then also, you know, would the homeowner be able to like walk in their front yard and say, "So I don't want this mailbox to move. I don't want," I mean, just a little more detail on that.
Well, sure. I went out with our engineer, I think it was, gosh, I don't remember when it was. It was, I think, last fall, and we walked the site and we knocked on doors. Anybody that was available, we met with him, went out in the yard and discussed what they wanted to keep, what they wanted us to avoid, if they were okay with trees being removed, et cetera. And we had preliminary plans at the time. And we put all that together and sent the plans back out via certified mail, as I mentioned, that was in your backup there, and invited anyone to call me, make an appointment. When I was on vacation over the holidays, during the Christmas time, as you mentioned, some of my staff went out and met with some of the residents again to get more input on what they were looking to see and make sure we really understood what they were going to be okay with. I think most people that we talked to understood that we're working in city right-of-way and that it's city property, and that we needed, we had direction to put this sidewalk in. But we were doing our best to try to make it as painless as possible. And then after we sent the mailer out, I got some more phone calls. We went out again and met with a couple of people and made some changes based on that too. So it was really a lot of back and forth, and I'm very pleased that we were able to get as much response as we did.
Yeah, thank you. And then also, for each tree lost, I know it says the homeowner had the chance to replace it. How does that replacement work? So like, if I'm losing a big tree, am I going to put in another big tree, or will it be smaller trees, but multiple? How does that work?
Yeah, typically, what we do is, you know, for example, we have a 10-inch palm that's coming out, that we need to be removed. Sometimes it's hard to get a palm of that size. You can do it, but we would offer that size, but we'd also offer the option of doing two 5-inch palms or something to that effect.
Okay.
And give them the option, the homeowner, the option of placement wherever they want it to be placed. It doesn't have to be in the same spot. Obviously, it can't be because we have conflict. But that's how we would do it. You'd try to do it in kind with the diameter total inches of tree.
Okay, thank you. And this is my last question, was just, is there any type of warranty or safeguard for a homeowner's landscaping after the project's completed? So like, say like, you know, three weeks later, after the sidewalk's done, a resident sends us a picture and says, "Look at all my dead grass from everybody walking on it," or at least the activity around it. How does that work?
Oh, so the way that works is the contractor that we hire will be responsible for all restoration. That would include landscaping or sod or any of that work, and the contract would include a one-year warranty period. So during that time, if the sod that they planted died, they would be responsible. We'd call them up. The contractor under warranty would come out and restore that and replace it.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lacuris and Bob, I'm very pleased that the staff worked very close with the residents and the homeowners to come up with a very good design. Have we looked at the irrigation and see if any repairs or any modifications they had to be?
Yeah, there will be some irrigation system modifications required. We're putting that in the contract as well, so the contractor will be responsible for making adjustments. Maybe if there's different sprinkler heads that need to be installed because you're putting a sidewalk over what was a zone that needed to be adjusted, all that's going to be included in the project.
Well, we discussed, you know, this project many, many times, and we all know that this is a safety concern. Do we have an estimated completion date?
I don't have an estimated completion date at this time. It'll probably take us a few months, but I have to get, go through the procurement process here, finish up design. It's probably, we're at least probably two months away before we can start construction. And a project of this scope is, it's probably about a month, maybe two at most for construction.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Could I say something, please?
Go ahead.
Just wanted to remind you, I know you know this, but the art event that Craig Park, that whole street gets full of cars, so, you know, that could cause a problem if it's not completed before then, or, you know what I'm saying?
Thank you. We'll definitely keep events in mind, for sure.
Thanks. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Jean Lindsay. I live at 305 South Spring Boulevard, and I have worked with Bob, and he's been really good to work with. And I was resolved that we were, it's just a sidewalk and we were going to get it put in. But however, when he was on vacation and they did come out, the arborist Shannon Brewer, and I even spoke to her on the phone again today, said that the oak tree in my yard possibly has some damage to it, and if I wanted to pay to have it x-rayed, that they could check to see if it was damaged, but the city would not pay for that, that I would have to have a different type of arborist come out to check it. She said that if they put the sidewalk in, she said the tree will not last even two years as it is. She said, "If we leave it the way it is," she told me, "it probably has a 10-year life." I actually took a picture of the tree. I don't know if anybody knows this tree. It's a big, large tree. Somebody carved in it years and years ago. He lives with a cross in it. The tree, to me, makes this street, and it just means a lot to me to have it there. I don't want to see the tree gone. I don't mind the sidewalk. I mean, I do, I wasn't resolved to have it at the beginning, but now I'm like, "All right, it's a sidewalk." She did say that if they put the sidewalk in and raised it and went over the top of the roots instead of dug below the roots, that we would be able to save the tree. It's just going to cost more money. I don't know if you're aware of that.
That's exactly the plan.
They're going to go up and over it? Okay. Because that wasn't brought to my attention, that that had been resolved. So we're going to raise it up?
Right.
Then all's good.
From the very start, I told you, we were going to do whatever we could accommodate you in the tree, and that was a choice, you know. If we were going to do it and the tree was going to stay, we were going to go over it to save your life and your tree.
What happens if the tree does die in the next two to three years? Am I responsible for removing that tree?
No, you're not. It's in the right-of-way. So it's, the board passed an ordinance a couple of years ago saying if it's within the right-of-way, the city will come remove it if it dies or if it's a dead tree. But maintenance of the tree, trimming and so on, is responsible of the homeowner. But if it does die, then the city would come out and remove it, or have someone come remove it.
Okay. Is there any way that they would want to x-ray the tree and see if we want to just get it out of there? Because if it is going to die in the next two years, why not, I mean, I'm, I'm not against removing it if it is damaged. If it's healthy, I don't want it removed.
Well, my understanding is because of the lightning strike, there's a problem. And my understanding was it was still a 10-year, either way, if we go over the roots, it's the same life. You know, when you estimate life at 10, 10 years where there is not, you don't know, so.
Yeah.
You know, our final thing was to just protect it, go over the roots like we were going to do and save it there, because I knew the tree would want to be staying. You know, we hope the estimate, again, the major thing my understanding was is the lightning strike, that could be a problem, but I've seen that happen, and trees last a lot more around here. We've all seen some that we thought were going to go and stuff, so I think we'll just deal with that when it comes.
Okay. It's green and new leaves are growing on it every day, so I don't think it's that unhealthy, but just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Ms. Broderick, you had a question on that? Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
In roll call.
Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mary Lozus?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number 11, amendment to a long-term lease, Community Dental Clinic staff report.
Mr. Smith, have you given that report for the city?
Good evening. Paul Smith, Public Services Director, and with us here tonight is Elodie Dorsso, the President and CEO of Community Health Centers of Pinellas, also known as CHCP. Also with her is Roger Salu, who's a board member of CHCP as well. This item is recommending an amendment to the long-term lease agreement that was approved this past September for the community dental clinic with Community Health Centers of Pinellas. These recommended changes come from the financing process of the project, which will be using a program by the U.S. Department of Treasury called New Market Tax Credits, or NMTC. This federal program is designed for projects like this and offers access to financing that's more flexible and affordable. The proposed changes are outlined in the backup and include providing additional time for CHCP to begin construction and complete construction, and this is required to provide assurance to the lender that the project could be completed well within the deadline and with margin for schedule uncertainty. Also extending the already existing mortgagee protections in the sections 13 and 14 of the lease to this NMTC financing lender, and finally allowing CHCP to assign or sublease the property to meet the requirements for the financing structure. So that's my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I know that, Mr. Trask, I know that you reviewed the amendment. Did you find the amendment to be satisfactory to you?
Yes, I was working with Paul on this from the very, very beginning.
Yes, I was working with Paul on this from the very, very beginning. There has been a couple of reiterations in it. I am comfortable with the way that it currently reads. I think the city is adequately protected. The time extensions, of course, doesn't do anything, puts you in any different position. It just puts us in a situation where we can make sure that the time requirements can be met. As for extending the mortgage protections, mortgagee protections, that was already in there. Since this is basically negative financing, we want to make sure that they're protected as well. And lastly, the sublease or the assignment, we added some provisions in there that would basically say that whether or not that it's assigned or subleased, that the original corporation, which is the Community Health Centers of Pinellas, Inc., will be responsible so that all of the obligations of the sublease or the assany would also be covered. So I'm comfortable with the way that it currently reads. And staff and I are recommending that the board authorize the mayor and the city manager to execute the amendment.
Thank you. I just want to comment and congratulate everybody involved in this project to bring the community clinic, dental clinic here to Tarpon Springs. This dental clinic will serve the most vulnerable people in Tarpon Springs and it's also part of our senior service initiative in Tarpon Springs. Before I ask Mr. Salay to come forward to speak, I'd like to thank him for his hard work on this, this project. Thank you.
Roger Salu, 567 Bayshore, Tarpon. Mayor, thank you for your kind comments. Part of the responsibility of us being here is my fault. On the board, I'm the finance chair and one of the responsibilities is to look for the lowest-cost financing for the organization. This project, in combination with a couple of others, is going to result in about a $12.5 million need on the part of the agency. This program, as outlined by Paul, will give us about a $2.5 million discount that becomes equity to the agency and it reduces the, the interest rates we pay to the lending source better than we would have gotten had we gone to the market to get the money for doing this. So I don't think there's any change to Tarpon. It's still a great project and it meets our needs by giving us better financing, makes it less expensive for us, more money, obviously, that can now be used with clients. So I'd like to recommend to you that, that you pass the change on the, on the lease and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. You have a question?
I just wanted to say something. Thank you, Roger. I always appreciate your great mind and being the checker for this project, but definitely it's a great idea that, you know, y'all did this and are saving some money. And I just want to say, Roger, you're keeping yourself so busy because I saw you in the opera Madame Butterfly and, and that's something I didn't know about you. So I just wanted to say you're everywhere and thank you for all your service to the city.
Thank you. Thank you. We have several members from the community clinic here with us, including the CEO. Do you want to say something? Thank you. Thank you, Roger.
Good evening. Elodie Dorso, CEO, Community Health Centers of Pinellas. I really just wanted to thank you for considering this amendment to the long-term land lease. Wasn't my intention to be back in front of you to do this. Had I been able to anticipate this need earlier, I would have. But through this lucrative financing deal, the complexities of this are just one that I couldn't. CHCP has had a long-term commitment to the city of Tarpon Springs, beginning in 2004, when we began seeing patients out of the health department. And then we solidified that commitment to the city when we partnered with St. Timothy's to build the current medical facility in 2009. Taking advantage of this unique and beneficial financing arrangement will allow us to build this 5,000-square-foot facility and increase our employment by 10 positions out of an average salary of $50,000 for those positions. In addition, we'll be able to serve the underserved and uninsured for additional $10,000 visits, dental visits a year. And so we're estimating a one-time capital investment to be close to $2 million for this project and then ongoing economic activity, obviously, in the area. So I just wanted to thank you and we look forward to continuing the partnership with the city.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? Commissioner Carr?
Thank you all for your comments and I'm excited to see this project continue to move forward and the residents of Tarpon Springs have some great area to have some assistance for dental work. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes, thank you. Looking forward to get, to see this project started. Item number 12 is to authorize settlement of according force no liens at 611 East Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. City Attorney, if you please, present this item.
In 2004, the property located at 611 East Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard had been found in violation of several code sections, including overgrowth and trash. The lien remained unaddressed for approximately 15 years. Late last year, I got a call and as a result of a letter that I had been talking to the attorney about that's representing one of the property owners, Ms. Muzon. She is attempting to sell her property at 606 Fairmont Street in Clearwater. Because she's a partial owner of the property at Martin Luther King, the code enforcement liens are cross-collateralized on the property in Clearwater. She is in the process of attempting to sell her property in Clearwater and she wants to sell it free and clear of the liens that took place back out in 2004. The liens total approximately $12,900. There is interest that is significant since 2005 totaling almost $12,500. There's also administrative fees of $75 and recording fees of $112.50. The total due is $25,660.44 as of December 15th, when we were working on this memorandum. We received an offer of settlement for $3,000 to be paid in one lump sum. That payment would be, I believe, in June. So there'd be a little bit of time before we'd actually get payment. But we think that it's appropriate because of this old lien is probably otherwise uncollectible to accept $3,000 in settlement of the lien, of the code enforcement lien and releasing the property located at 606 Fairmont Street in Clearwater. So that's what I'm asking for your authority to do, is to accept the $3,000 in exchange for the partial release of the property in Clearwater.
Thank you. Any commission comments?
I've got just a question for clarification. City Attorney, you talked about in the backup that it's going to be paid over 10 months. Is the lien going to be released once the payment is finalized or is it going to be released once we agree to it?
The payment is not going to be over 10 months. It's going to be a one-time payment. They have requested it to be over a number of months. And after speaking with the city manager and going back and talking to the attorney again, we're only, we're only requesting authorization for a single payment.
Okay.
So you're not going to be taking it over a period of time. But the answer to the question is, is that once we receive payment, once the payment is cleared, the bank, then we release the lien.
All right. Thank you for clarification.
Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Attorney, I'll support your recommendation. I need a motion.
Move to settle for the recommended $3,000.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is the award bid number 200031BJJ Palm Avenue Drainage Improvements Rebid. Staff report.
We're back with you. As you remember, this item was bid before and we asked you to reject all bids. Things were refined and we went out to bid again and luckily we came in where we thought we were going to go. So I'll turn it over to Tom Function to remind you of this project and hopefully approve this bid at the price we had expected this time.
Good evening, Tom Function, Public Works Director. Palm Avenue Drainage Project was, is part of the Stormwater Action Plan, was originally bid last summer. All the bids we received were much higher than the engineer's estimate. So after rejection of the original bids, we reevaluated the project, looked at the plans, made some changes to it. Thank you. And put it back out to bid. The rebid came in at about five, a little over $500,000, which included those add alternatives which we had put in. They were specified in the original bid. The new bid is much more in line with the engineer's original estimates. The project will alleviate stormwater flooding on both east and west side of Palm Avenue, which intersects with Tarpon Drive. The outfall will discharge into a new pond on the east side of Tarpon Drive, south of Gulf Road, a property that we had purchased last year from the American Legion. There was cooperative funding involved in this agreement with Southwest Florida Water Management District for the Palm Avenue flooding abatement. The district anticipated funding up about up to $249,000, almost $500,000. This we pay from the stormwater budget account, as you see in your backup, and reimbursed about, again, about $250,000 through the corporate. And that reimbursement will come as we invoice from the contractor. This is the area we're talking about here. And that's the area right there. We'll be, as I said, we will be putting a pond down on the south side of Gulf Road, which just sits down behind the firehouse, just south of the communication tower up off of Gulf Road. And it's a little bit, just a little bit east of the school, high school.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, the drainage improvements is actually one of my goals and objectives. Several years ago, Tom, we identified that we had areas with drainage problems, so we created an action plan.
Yes, we did.
That action plan was created by Mr. Robinson. Thank you, Bob, for doing that. Do we have an updated copy that you can share with us? You know, if you can, actually, not today, but if you just mail it to us so we can have it.
Good, good point. This was actually brought up in 2014. It was a five-year plan, which ends this year. We are working with the, our engineer right now, updating a new one and we'll be coming up with a new five-year project. There's one more major project left on this list and that is the Gross Avenue Project. And I'll be bringing that back to you hopefully in a very short period of time.
Yeah, we purchased several properties for, for stormwater ponds and this is one of them.
Yeah, the American Legion.
So we have a couple that we're working with.
Yeah, the American Legion property was actually originally about a $350,000 estimate purchase and we actually come, brought in quite much less money than that, about $80,000 for the final purchase. So a little bit of savings there, which I'm happy with.
Thank you.
Did you negotiate that deal, Tom?
We, well, we made them put the first offer up and we accepted it.
Sounds like you did a good job.
Never mentioned money in the deal. You're the first one to lose, right?
Somebody taught you something.
Any commission comments on this item?
I've got some comments. Thanks. Tom, could you elaborate a little bit more on the scope of the project in terms of how you propose to get the water to that holding pond?
Sure, no problem. As you see, on both the west side and on the east side of Palm Avenue, on both sides of Tarpon Ave, there's a lower area, bowl area that the water collects in that area. We're going to take and pipe it with, of course, catch basins to Tarpon Ave and then we'll bring it down along the edge of, I think it's on the west side of Tarpon Ave, underneath Gulf Road, down Tarpon Drive to that pond, which sits just beyond, I don't know where the lift station is there. There's a lift station on the east side of Gulf Drive there. And that's where the pond will go in.
It'll be forced with pumps or it's?
No, it's all gravity fed.
Gotcha.
All gravity, which we prefer that.
Downhill.
And then, in terms of the funding, SWIFTMUD's going to reimburse us for half?
Yeah, up to $250,000. Once we get shovels in the ground, we'll be able to invoice SWIFTMUD for at least the engineering part, which would be $100,000. So halfway through the project, we should be getting some of that money back.
So, so it's not unknown then how much they're going to reimburse us for?
Up to 50%. That's where the $249,000 is going to come over probably. As our last estimate came in, it was just a little bit over the engineer's estimate, but within the contingency fund.
And then it's, so we, we front the money out of the stormwater fund and then in terms of collecting the, the difference from SWIFTMUD?
Yes, we will invoice as we go along. We'll send an invoice to SWIFTMUD with the application and they will then forward, if one approves, they'll be forwarded back. In this case here, we have about $100,000 of this in the engineering. Once we put shovels in the ground, then we can go forward with our invoicing to SWIFTMUD and money's going to come back, actually, pretty quickly.
Do they reimburse as we go?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other commission comments? Commissioner Carr?
I'd like to comment. I just want to thank the city staff for bringing this back and rebidding it because all the bids came above and you all could have just stuck with it and said $200,000 higher. So thank you for rebidding it. It's the local Tarpon Springs company is actually the lowest bidder, which is encouraging as well. So it's great to see a local company win the bid. So thank you all for your work on this.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, to echo the other commissioners, I'm really proud of staff for rebidding this, getting it right. And then I'm really glad to see that a Tarpon Springs-based company ended up being the most competitive. So again, thank you guys and I'm excited to see the improvements.
We are.
Can't jump in the puddle anymore.
Are there any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes. We are now going to the audience of resolutions. Item number 14 is a resolution 2019, that's 43, the application 19-141. Condition is retro life, life care Krista Moffett, Moffett. City Attorney, if you please, read the resolution.
Yes, this is resolution 2019-43, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving application 19-141 requesting conditional use approval to establish an adult daycare facility at 1254 South Pinellas Avenue in the neighborhood business NV Zoning District and providing for findings, providing for conditions and providing for an effective date. And Mayor, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. If I could read the proceedings?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. So this is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has made the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. With that being said, anyone that's going to speak at this hearing, I need you to stand up, raise your right hand and be sworn under oath. Anyone that's going to speak. You swear that the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. So city staff would present. Mr. Serna?
Good evening, Louis Serna, presenting staff comments. This is a conditional use approval to allow the establishment of an adult daycare center in the Neighborhood Business Zoning District. The location is 1254 South Pinellas Avenue. This is the location of a former, a former location of an anytime fitness facility. It's located, it will be located within the same footprint and the same site layout, so all of the work associated with this facility will be interior to the site. It is located in a commercial and office plaza that contains offices and medical uses as well as commercial uses in the general area. The use as described by the applicant will include offices on the, on the second floor and the, the adult daycare on the first floor. The applicant indicated that transportation for seniors to and from the site will be provided, and meals will be provided, but they will be prepared off-site. Staff has reviewed this for consistency with the review criteria for conditional uses, and I'll just go through those briefly. The first criteria is conformance with the requirements of the Land Development Code. The second is the use to which the property may be put is appropriate to the property in question and is compatible with the existing and planned uses in the area. Third, the conditional use is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of all elements of the comprehensive plan. Four, the conditional use will not result in significant adverse impacts to the environment or historical resources. Five, the conditional use would not, will not adversely affect adjoining property values. And six, the conditional use will not adversely impact nor exceed the capacity or the fiscal ability of the city to provide available public facilities. And seven, the conditional use shall provide for efficient and orderly development, considering the impacts upon growth patterns and the cost of the city to provide public facilities. Our specific findings in regard to the criteria are contained in the staff report in front of you. Just briefly to summarize, primarily due to the location of the site, its surroundings, and the use as proposed, staff has finds that the proposed conditional use does meet the criteria of the Land Development Code. Staff recommends approval of resolution 2019-43 with three conditions. First, the conditional use will expire with one, within one year of approval if a building permit is not issued for the property. Second, a copy of the instrument governing use and maintenance of the common elements of the Tarpon Bend Professional Center Property Owners Association will need to be supplied to document the availability and maintenance of parking, drives, landscaping, waste disposal, and other common elements for the property. And third, all applicable building permits shall be obtained and shall address any renovations necessary to meet applicable occupancy and fire codes. The, the Planning and Zoning Board heard this on December 16th, 2019, and recommended in favor of the petition, subject to the three conditions recommended by staff. They added an additional condition, that a disaster plan must be submitted to the city and updated yearly. Based on our findings on the criteria, staffers recommending approval of this with, subject to the three staff conditions and the additional condition recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board.
Any questions from the commission? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Louis, thanks for your presentation. I don't, I don't see any issue with the compatibility of the proposed use. I do have a curiosity question as to why within their use is the need for the conditional use permit, or conditional use? What within their use requires that?
It's the use of a daycare facility in, in the Neighborhood Business Zoning District. It's, it's a use listed as a conditional use.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Carr?
I'm sorry, I just blanked on what I was going to ask Louis.
Want to come back to you?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Seber, you had a question?
Yes, yeah, the zoning district allows for daycare centers as a conditional use to answer Commissioner Terapani. Krista, Krista, thank you for bringing this to Tarpon Springs. This is a much-needed facility. I think the location is perfect, and you do everything with integrity, so I definitely support this application. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan, did you have questions?
No. No, I guess just a comment. I just wanted to thank you guys for such a detailed plan.
We're going to save comments. We have to complete the hearing before you actually comment on the application, so I'm going to hold you off on just the comments aspect of it. I should have mentioned that to Commissioner Seber. We have to get all the evidence in before you take action on the application, so Commissioner Carr, you had a question?
I have a question, not a comment. Louis, how, how and if do, does the city enforce a disaster plan must be submitted to the city and updated yearly, and what department would be responsible for that if that's approved?
Yes, this is something that the Planning and Zoning Board recommended. There's not been a precedence for this. I know, I understand this was discussed by staff. This will just have to be something that will have to be enforced by staff, probably the Planning Department, together with the Building Department.
Mayor, did you have questions? Mayor, did you have questions?
No, no. Actually, I need to comment to the applicant when...
Okay, so we're going to have, Mr. Serna, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I don't.
Okay, so the applicant has the opportunity to step forward, make a presentation. If you could, please state your, please state your name and your address, and make any presentation that you would like.
One, my name is Krista Moffett. I'm at 924 Riverside Ridge Road in Tarpon Springs. I just wanted to be able to answer Commissioner Carr's question. The disaster plan or emergency plan is actually a state reg through ACHA, which is our administration for healthcare that regulates adult daycare, and I believe that the gentleman, and I apologize, his name escapes me, he was telling us that zoning and planning, his background was as an elder law attorney, and so he was well-versed in all this, so he just wanted to make sure that was on record. It's a state reg for us to have that on record, and it actually has to be updated and signed off by, on, with Tallahassee for ACHA every year.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Is there anything else that you wanted to present to the commission on your application?
I would, in, I'm Italian, so in 30 seconds or less, just give you a little overview. My background is as a registered nurse, and of my 26 years of nursing, 20 of them I have been a geriatric nurse practitioner. My husband Christopher is 35 years a pharmacist. We actually owned an adult daycare in New Jersey for 12 years, and we moved down here eight years ago, and one of the biggest hurdles that we see in elder care, especially in the state of Florida, probably because of our densely, you know, it's densely populated population with, with the elders, is the readmission back into hospitalizations. We both actually work at Advent Health North Pinellas. The adult daycares that are around, there's approximately 12 right now in Pinellas County, there is only one that is north of 580, which just recently opened. They are very underutilized, and we are a medical model adult daycare, so we can accommodate folks who are brittle diabetics or might have ostomy bags or things, but otherwise are very healthy, active seniors. And for a cost of $85 a day, for you to be able to get between six and eight hours of activities and make sure your medications are okay at home, and that you're getting good balanced food, and get you to your doctor's appointments, that will take a huge burden off of what's going on that we see at the hospital, where folks are being readmitted a lot because they don't have resources in the communities to stay in their own homes. So we're very excited to be doing this. I wanted to just reassure everyone that this was not our first rodeo. We've had home care companies, we actually have a home care company called Retro. The motif of this is very different. It's going to be designed like an old town from the 50s inside. The vehicles are all getting wrapped like old Woody wagons. We're going to take all these folks back to the 50s and 60s, which is very nostalgic for them, and will be very therapeutic for everybody. So thank you very much for all your support. We're very excited. This is something the community is in desperate need of for our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to, I like your comment.
Yeah, so questions now, no comments. Questions? Any questions? Okay, so I need to open it up to the public, Mayor?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address this application? Saying none. Does the city like to make a summary? Mr. Serna, did you want to summarize the city's position?
No, I'd just be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any other questions of Mr. Serna? Okay, so ma'am, you have the opportunity to summarize your case before the commission considers approval. Anything else you want to add? Okay, so Mayor, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That's okay, well, thank you. Mrs. Moffett, welcome back to Tarpon Springs. Adult, adult daycare facility we really need in Tarpon Springs. As you know, we have a very large senior population here, and you're going to be very successful. And I am very glad that you're going to provide transportation and two meals for the seniors. The question I have, how many people are you able to accommodate in that facility?
Lysenger is a compli, it's a, a mathematical equation between square footage. We will be seeking licensure for approximately 40 folks. Above that, my past experience is that your quality starts to fail. It starts to become more of a warehouse than something that's therapeutic. So our number, our magic number is 40, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will suggest to you to work with the senior information center that we have in the library. The number there is 937-1110. They can provide you with information about services and benefits that are available for the seniors. I think that's going to be very beneficial. We also have the old, the senior transportation, so that might be very useful to you, too. And thank you for your service. Permission comments, questions?
Commissioner Donovan had it.
Donovan? Yeah.
I, I almost finished the thank you. I almost did. I just want to say thanks. It's a tremendously unique business. I was really impressed with all your qualifications, especially the dementia-related ones. I mean, top to bottom, it was great. I think it'll be a great, great service for our seniors and also for their families, so thank you.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Approve.
And roll call.
I'll second.
You made the first motion.
Mr. Seber made the motion. Vice Mayor seconded.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapani?
Yes.
Merrill Hoozus.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Moffett, thank you. Next item on the agenda is number 15, is the ordinance 2020-02, the application 19-151, partial vacation of easement, 1615 Cromwell Drive. This is the first reading. City Attorney, if you please read the ordinance.
Mayor Commissioners' ordinance 2020-02, an ordinance to the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida vacating and abandoning a portion of a 10-foot-wide utility easement along the east property line of Trentwood Manor Lot 61, Platbook 68, Page 64. Providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for proposed and future easements, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2020-02 by title only. There will be a second reading held on January 28th, 2020. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on January 17th, 2020.
Staff report, still the first.
Serna?
Yes, Louis Serna, presenting staff comments again. This applicant is requesting to vacate a 5-foot-wide by 38.57-foot portion of a 10-by-60's drainage and utility easement that runs along the rear of Lot 61 of Trentwood Manor subdivision, 1615 Cromwell Drive. The applicant has provided the required letters of no objections from the various utilities providers. Just some background, the house was built in 1977 with the pool, and portions of the pool and the pool deck were built over the, over the 5-foot portion of the existing easement, and just for sale purposes and to clear up the title, the applicant is requesting vacation of the easement. Duke Energy is the only utility that has any facilities in, within the easement, and they've, do not object. It is not, their utilities are not within the 5-foot wide portion that's being abandoned. The criteria is in the staff report. The first criteria is that the subject property is not needed for the distribution, expansion, or maintenance of existing or future utility services, and as I indicated, Duke Energy, the only utility service within that easement, has indicated that they do not object to the abandonment. The other criteria are not applicable to this abandonment, and staff has recommended therefore approval of this first reading.
Thank you. The house was built 43 years ago, and didn't have any surveys all these years to, to notice that there was a problem?
I'm not certain what, I'm not certain what occurred in '77, whether or not that was checked, or a survey was not required at that time, but it was clearly built over the easement.
Thank you. Any commission comments, questions?
That was my question as well, is how did that pool get built into the easement? I have no objection to this application.
And that, and that would not occur under today's rules, of course.
Any public comments on this item? You hear none? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapani?
Yes.
Merrill Hoozus.
Yes. Item number 16 is the ordinance 2019-26, the amendment to the public ordinance. This is the first reading. Mr. Trash, would you please read the ordinance?
Mayor Commissioners' ordinance 2019-26, the ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending section 296.00 of Appendix A of the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, to amend the timing of the payment in lieu of public art from the issuance of a building permit to approval of the final inspection of the project, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for an effective date of this ordinance. That was the first reading of ordinance 2019-26 by title only. There will be a second reading of this ordinance on January 28th, 2020. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November 29th, 2019.
Staff report, Kevin?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Kevin Powell, Building Development Department Director. We're bringing a wording change to the public art fee when its payment is due. Currently, if the developer or contractor elects to pay into the art fee, it would be done prior to issuance of a building permit. However, what they're primarily doing is they're checking the box that they're going to do an art project, and about halfway through the project, they go ahead and decide that we're going to go ahead and pay the art fee in lieu of doing the art project. So what we want to do is, is have a way that we can either have them do the art project or contribute into the art fee by allowing them to pay prior to final inspections, which then gives my department the ability to hold a certificate of occupancy or certificate of completion until either the art project or the art fee is paid into. This did go before the Planning and Zoning Board, and they did approve it, and I also presented it to the Public Art Committee last Friday, and they went ahead and voted and approved that also. So we're bringing it to, to the commission now to present that wording change. And the only wording change in there is that the fee must be paid prior to approval of final inspection of the project, where prior to that, it was fees must be paid prior to building permit. Pending any questions?
Kevin, how often do you see that it's happening, that?
It's a pretty regular basis.
Really?
That they'll check the public art fee, and then we'll get the Public Art Committee involved, because it has to go to them, and then as they start going through that process, they start dragging their fee. They're just leveraging their monies to start the project, build the project, and then about midway through, they come in and do the change.
Because this is only for large projects, over a million dollars?
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Terapani?
Thank you. Kevin, what's your and staff sense based on the proposed language amendments? You think we'll start to see more public art projects with this language amendment versus just paying, developers paying into the, into the fund?
I would like to hope they do more art projects, but I think it's just going to go ahead and keep the contractor and developer really honest in what their intentions are. Either leverage your money up front, or, you know, go ahead and do the project. It's, it just takes a lot of staff time once they check the box saying they're going to do the art project.
Sure.
And then midway through, they change direction.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Seber?
Thank you. I think this is a great idea, because I haven't seen developers who check that box, and then they would come back and complete artwork, or have our Public Arts Committee complete a piece of art, and it just gets lost or not done, not accomplished. So I think this is great, and I definitely agree with it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question real quick, Mayor? Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but it states that the, the art project would need to be 1% of the project's cost, but then if they wanted to pay in lieu, it'd be 0.75%?
Yes.
And if the city wants to encourage more art projects on the properties, you're ultimately giving the developer a discount to pay in lieu instead of doing the art project itself, correct?
I haven't looked at it that way.
I just want to bring that up to you guys, so I know, it was a statement that was made, so, I mean, maybe we could think about this in between the readings, and maybe address that at some point as well. If we wanted to encourage more development, or more public art and developments, I'm going to take the discount all day long if I'm the developer, because it's cheaper. You're looking at 25 basis points or so. So if we want to see more art projects and developments, I think we'd need to be even or something along those lines. So just an FYI.
Look at that and make some adjustments.
I'm just not so sure that we'd have to do a different ordinance. I don't know if we could go to the second reading and make that kind of change. we could go in second reading and make that, kind of change to what we've been advertised. I'll defer to the city attorney on that.
Yeah, so if we were to make that change, we'd need to do a third reading. We'd read it the second time with one percent, and then we'd have to read it a third time.
I'm not saying we have to make the change. I'm just bringing it up.
Gotcha.
It's about the point.
Mayor, you mind? So, to further your point, Commissioner, I think the monies are, that we would collect from the developer go directly to the public art fund, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, in theory, like I told, I understand what you're saying. It makes sense that it would almost be the opposite, right? That it would be seventy-five, or point seven-five for the public art project, and a point to, or a percent to pay into, right?
Yeah.
But if, if the money's going into the public art fund anyways, in which case this board can have more of a influence on the type of project, it might just be a wash.
I prefer, I like having the funds ourselves as well.
Me too. But there's going to be some other opportunities. The, the Public Art Board is working on now. They've already had a session. They're going to be coming with some changes. So, we just wanted to, we didn't want to wait on this one, because we've seen the consistent problem, and, and we didn't want to wait for the recommendations the art board could be in, but that certainly could be one that when they bring theirs forward, that maybe we can deal with and talk to them about. It's just a necessity of everything we've seen, and to really put a hitch where they're not going to get their CO, to add that, which is not in there now, is just, just the biggest key of, of doing it, because we really, you know, want to avoid any type of court battle. We come this way, it's plain, simple up, and they're not going to have to, you know, if it's a big chunk of money, they're not going to have to fool us by saying they're going to do something, string us along and do it. So, while we're getting this amount in front of it, the art board's working, and they're going to be coming forward with you with some changes and stuff. So, maybe that's something they discuss, and the change is also with you.
Yeah, and this also gives me the ability to hold back on a certificate of occupancy or certificate of completion being in ordinance. Right now, by statute, I can't do that. If they don't pay, they dance around it, then I'm still having to go ahead and issue their certificate of occupancies. So, by ordinance now, if we approve this by second reading, then I have the ability to go ahead and hold that.
Thanks for clarification. Kevin, just want to make one comment too. I've talked to a lot of contractors over the past couple of months, and I've gotten a lot of good feedback from the building department. So, thank you for everything you're doing for the city.
Thank you.
Any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis.
Yes, thank you. Well, that concludes the agenda tonight. And we go to staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow at one o'clock, we'll be retiring our K-9 Ernie. As you know, was a national champion a couple of years ago, so have a nice little ceremony at the police department. I know that you all noticed on that. But he's, he was an excellent K-9, and we have another one that's obviously currently working that has a lot of potential. He'll be a really good dog, but just the right thing to do. And Ernie obviously will stay with Tommy and, you know, for the rest of his days. So, thank you.
Still the course?
Just, just a few things. One of the things you're gonna, a couple of things that you're going to see in the new year again, and probably you'll see it within the next week or two again, as I've said, and I've sent some emails to you, we're going to update our, our project list that we update every week, and not only have the major projects, but have projects that either the commission have brought up and concerned, but they haven't necessarily got on that big project list. We're going to be adding that to there. So, every week when there's the update, you can see a progress of some of these projects. One of the ones that you're going to start seeing at the start of the year, and once we got everything done with Epiphany and got all the Christmas decorations are down, one of the major in-house projects that Tom Function and Public Works will be taking on is the North Pinellas Beautification Project. You'll start to see the planners going up. We've got the new assistant supervisors going to be working on all the property owners that we can get. We've had Commissioner Carr help us with some. The mayor's given us some. We're going to be working to get as much landscaping and beautification in deals with those property owners. It'd be a real good deal for them, because if something changes and they want it off, we'll have it set so it's easily movable and off the property. So, all they got to do in ten days is do it. So, it's a simple agreement. If they're going to develop it and we put sun on it, then, you know, it's moved out before they need it. But again, the hope is to concentrate as much as we can on that, the corridor from Orange Street down to Dotakinees, and that's one of the projects in-house that you're going to be, be seeing a lot of. We're putting together, hopefully by next meeting, we are working on the CRA. We talked the last CRA meeting about some things to look at. We have done some, this week, some meetings with the stakeholders. We're meeting with some of the property owners. So, hopefully, next meeting or latest February, we'll have a CRA meeting to discuss all the things that was talked about, and some ideas from them to come together and see where we want to dedicate that money. I've secured the location, and hopefully, we're looking somewhere in the last week of July of, of myself going down and having a mini town hall meeting with the Sponge, with, with the Sponge Docks businesses and business owners, Dimitri's underwater, whom the mayor and I was down there, looking at the check valves being installed down there. We were able to meet with them and talk to them to give us a good central location for me to meet with them, as we had at the meeting and stuff. So, we're, we're working on the good date where I can get Mr. Robertson, some of our other people down there. We can meet with them and get feedback to bring back to you on, on, on what those people, that the docks want to see improvements, not only now, but as we come up to the budget for next year, which again, we're, budgeting starts up faster than anything in April. So, not only what they like to see now that we can do, what they want to see in upcoming year budget, what they want to see down the future in budget, to bring those back to you. That was the direction of the commission. So, we've got the location, and we just got to work on a date, and we're looking at the end of the month to, to have that, that meeting down there, and I'll, I'll let you know when that is. So, that's just some of the things we've, we've got going on in, in January.
Mr. Licorice, the list of the projects. You going to place them on the website for people to see it, right?
That's where, yes.
I would just like to remind our residents, next Tuesday on the twenty-first, here in the auditorium, from six to eight, the League of Women Voters will be conducting a candidate form, and the city is hosting it. From six to six-thirty, there's a meeting greet, and from six-thirty to eight would be the form, and allow the residents to ask the candidates questions.
Thank you.
I'm trying to get everything fast, because this is a good time. I know some people got some places to go tonight. I don't know if you noticed yet, but we're getting the word out. We've had our first publicized meetings from our room upstairs, our mini commission chambers and stuff. The Public Art has met there twice. We'll be having the next sustainability meeting. It will be televised live this Thursday. That'll be the next meeting, and then next week, the budget advisory meeting for the first time. We'll be, be able to be televised live and, and get the citizens to watch the budget process. And we've always said of all the meetings, to watch what are the citizens that this board has placed on that committee that is dedicated to looking at everything and doing a lot of the, the work inside with every facet of that budget, so we have a smoother budget process. We're real happy. Public Art, obviously with all that's going on in Public Art, the real need was for the community to be able to look at those, not only watch it live, but watch those. Obviously, we know what sustainability is and how problems get, so it's great that everybody's going to be watching those meetings. And again, budget advisory, so two meetings have already happened, the Public Art meeting today, and their, their works last week. We'll have another one with sustainability. And again, the meetings that we're holding upstairs, we'll be able to televise live, and of course, be available to watch at a, at a later time. And I think that's going to bring a lot of information to, to let the public get, and you as commissioners who are interested can just, at any time, you know, you have a spare minute, if you have something of interest on those meetings, you'll be able to see it also. So, so we're very excited. And that room turned out, you know, even better than I expected. I had high expectations, but it even came out better than I expected.
It's nice. Commissioner Carr?
Just want to wish everyone a happy new year. It's been a great two thousand nineteen.
No, I was just going to say, and I know you didn't feel good all night. I thank you for coming and attending the meeting.
Yeah, I'm glad to be here, and I'm glad I made it through. Happy new year to you all. Enjoyed serving with you all in two thousand nineteen. Looking forward to twenty twenty. Happy new year to all the city residents and also the city staff. I also want to say publicly what a great job our staff has did and the police force with Epiphany, and thank you to all the volunteers, because it takes more than just one person to run this event. There's hundreds of volunteers from the Glundy to all the staff that helped set up all the barricades, to all the different police forces that interacted with all the special guests that we had this year. Mark, great job in the media room upstairs, or we shouldn't come up with a creative name for that room of some sort, but I think it looks great. I went up there, and we had a meeting, we met up there last week. So, great job on that, and thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to give some accolades from two thousand nineteen, especially during the holiday season, to staff and the city manager. I feel like this holiday season was probably one of the best in, in recent times. The decorations were over, over in a top, over in abundance of what we normally have, which I'm appreciative of. I think everything, the downtown, the Sponge Docks, Spring Bayou, all of it looked fantastic. The Snow Place event was obviously a huge success, as it usually is. But that said, a lot of coordination takes place to, to make those things happen. The parade, all the parades we had were fantastic, the Christmas parade, you know, through Epiphany. So, I'm just really appreciative of the extra beautification efforts that you and staff made. I know it takes a lot of effort and collaboration. And then I just want to say how excited I am to see the installation of the Backflow Prevention in the Sponge Docks. That's something that anytime I feel like we can, not necessarily publicize, but for lack of a better term, let our residents know what's going on, you know, social media, website updates. I know that we do that, but I was just really overjoyed to see that that's actually taking place. And then also the North Pinellas Avenue beautification efforts, that's something that's been long overdue. So, I'm really pleased to see that we're moving forward with that. And I think that the, whatever type of mechanism via easement that we use with the property owners, I think, you know, that's just another creative way that we've had to get in some of these areas. I think we first started doing that on the Sponge Docks years ago, and it's proved to be a successful, successful avenue for us. So, thank you for that, and keep up the good work.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes, I also want to wish everybody a happy new year. I hope your holidays were great. I am also happy with these check valves being completed. I meet with a group of merchants regularly, and that's been on their minds for a long time, to get that accomplished. So, I want to thank the city for all their hard work to, to get that done. We're almost done with it anyway, and hopefully it'll help with the flooding on the Sponge Docks. We do have an arts and crafts event this weekend on the Sponge Dock, so I hope you guys can make it out there. And I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to highlight two new local businesses, the Tarpon Distillery and Catarina's Taverna. They have those awesome murals outside of them on alternate nineteen. I just drive by them every day, and they look great. So, big props to them for investing in that artwork, because it catches my eye every time, and it looks really good. On a different note, my new school schedule has begun, so I'm, I'm now free on Thursdays for work sessions in the future, but now Mondays are my bad days. So, just a heads up to city staff, Mondays are kind of off limits for me. Tarpon Springs Junior Sponger's Early Registration Event is happening Sunday, January twenty-sixth, from one to four at Discovery Park. And again, I just wanted to truly, truly thank this board. I know in the fall, we, we came through big time with some scholarship funding for them, and they went from not having a program to now having the most affordable program in Pinellas County. So, I mean, those are kids' lives that this board directly impacted. So, thank everybody for that. And then Monday, January twenty-seventh, Tarpon Springs High School Football Team and myself are partnering with a local business, Jamaican Jerk Center, just to clean up their area. We're just going to go out with some trash bags and some rakes and see what we can clean around that area of that business. So, if anybody would like to join, please just let me know.
Thank you. Also like to wish everyone to have a happy new year. And again, I'd like to remind everyone that Saturday, January eighteen, we have the Dr. Maratha King Celebration and the parade, which begins at eleven a.m. at the Levas and Tarpon Avenue, and after that would be a barbecue at the Dorset Park. I'd like to, to see everybody to attend. Mr. Licorice, I want to thank you for what you just said, that you're going to have an updated project list, and it's going to be placed on the website. If you please provide us with a list of the completed projects that we actually completed in nineteen ninety-nine, I mean nineteen nineteen, and also projects that are in progress, okay? I also like to take this opportunity to thank everyone involved with the Epiphany this year, and, and with the visit of the Prime Minister of Greece and the new Archbishop, El Pito Fores. It was a great event. It was actually, was a team effort. I'd like to thank our police, fire, our city employees, St. Nicholas Church, and all the volunteers, and all the other agencies. Please extend our appreciation to them for helping us out.
Weathers are already went out. We already sent the wethers out.
Yeah. I thank that everybody an excellent job, so we got something that we all should be proud of. That concludes the irregular session, and it's adjourned at eight fifteen p.m. Thank you, and good night.